Welcome to our Monday special meeting, June 30th at 10:00 a.m. in the Town Hall Selectmen's Conference Room at 60 Center Square in East Long Meadow. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag is behind you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first we have Mr. Hilliard for a quick update on what's going on. How are we doing?
We're done. I just have three things to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And I have some tickets to write out, but I spent three nights last week and 10 hours yesterday chasing all these around.
Okay.
For which...
How many violations did we have?
We had six ticketed violations and two other violations.
Okay.
I don't know where Mr. Turner is getting his sources from, but I don't really care.
That's all right, you've done it well.
I've talked to people. My character has been assaulted.
Oh, okay.
By Mr. Turner and...
I thought I kind of curtailed that a little bit.
Well, you tried to, but it doesn't curtail it with me, it might have been with him.
Okay.
But the reporter here from the... The reminder has published stating that I have looked at none of these, am I correct?
Okay, Mr. Hilliard?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll get it situated right now.
But that's it.
So now, tell me something.
I'm gonna go over briefly.
Did we send a letter to Mr. Turner?
Mr. Turner's getting all those.
That's what I'm talking about, okay, great. We're gonna send that right off to him today?
Today I'll have it out to him.
Okay, fantastic.
It's gonna go out in a whole package. You each receive copies of this package.
Great, and the planning board received it too?
The planning board will receive it. I have to make one more copy.
Well, you know what, if you give it to Nick... Oh, you have your own secretary, never mind.
I know, I'll take care of it.
You got it, okay.
You know, I just want to briefly, just, I don't want to tie up too much of your time. I just want to Mr. Turner's complaints.
Okay.
The complaint is for landscaping.
Can you see?
I have pictures of all of these.
Okay. For landscaping?
Vehicles, okay?
Okay.
How would you like to receive a complaint, a letter on... You live there and you receive a letter on that, how would you like that?
Where's the vehicle?
Where's the...
There is none.
Is there a vehicle?
Okay. I'm sorry to be long, but there is none.
No, okay.
That's the point I'm trying to get across.
Okay.
And I can show you, I want to show you another one.
Okay.
In particular, these people have beautiful lawns.
Okay, and what time were... Do we have a time that is where they can?
Well, I can't, I have...
Yeah.
I can't, that was done by my iPad, so I have to look at these ones.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha. It might be helpful, though, just to put the...
I can't do it, my iPad.
But you know what, I think when you look at the iPad, though, Dan, you'll see there is a time stamped on it when you've taken the pictures usually. I'll show you later, no biggie.
Well, that's okay.
We can just write it up in there.
I'm gonna do it real quick.
Okay.
This gentleman went out to his house, he doesn't run a landscape business, as Mr. Turner said he did.
You got it?
He actually has, he's a moto, his hobby is motocross.
Oh, like motorcycle?
Yes.
So that's his trailer.
That's the trailer?
I talked to him personally on Saturday.
Okay.
I want to show you some pretty ones.
You know, we don't have to see everyone.
No, I don't want to show you anything, I'm not gonna show you.
I appreciate it, I'd love to look through that, you know.
I just want to show you briefly, well, you can't see that, because you can't see through the bushes. That's fine, Kibby Road.
I like how it has this book, though.
Two, seven, okay. Apparently this gentleman is running a landscaping business out of his yard.
I'm gonna go to him first, then I'll come over here.
You should see his backyard, it's absolutely gorgeous. I think that somebody saw a landscaping vehicle there.
That was doing, actually landscaping for him, perhaps?
Probably.
Oh, they're ready for the fourth.
Yeah, I was, you know, I've been chasing these things around.
May I?
Absolutely, you can hold that for a few minutes if you want.
Oh, you know what? I'll come up and I'll look at it and see everything.
It'd be difficult to make copies.
No, no, I wouldn't want you to make copies, absolutely not. And I am a copy person, but it's not necessary.
Now, obviously, if I make through the chair.
Sure.
The operative thing here is to get back to Mr. Turner, because then the ball is in his court as far as zoning board of appeals.
Exactly.
So it's sort of, once we, once you address these, right, in his opinion, right, wrong, or indifferent, it's now the ball's in his court with ZBA.
Well, he has quite a few of them he wants to appeal, and it's gonna cost him maybe about $3,000 to appeal all my decisions.
Okay, so what we can do is, are you gonna send them to... You're not gonna send individual letters, are you?
Absolutely not.
No, no, are you gonna put them in a package?
Yeah.
Great, great, and you're gonna give us copies too?
Oh, you already have copies in your basket.
Thank you. When do we get those copies? Today? All right, sounds like a plan. Thank you for coming. Yes?
Can we ask a question or anything like that?
Okay, what is the question?
No, I know that one, yeah.
Oh, well...
If one goes up?
Is it Jermaine to what we're doing?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right, so you are all set?
Well, I gotta, something I wanted to say before he leaves.
Okay, sure.
I got a letter written to my house from a person that heard this on the East Long Meadow TV, and he's thinking of putting a suit against Mr. Turner, because he happens to be employee for the post office, was home with his government truck, and he's a little disturbed that Mr. Turner is going around just... Anytime he sees a truck in someone's yard, he takes a picture, you know, he writes them up, so... I called the guy to explain to him we're on the situation, and he thinks it's a form of harassment, this... And I got the letter at my house, but it was addressed to me, so...
I have to say, though, that any resident, if they see somebody that's not do... Suspect that somebody's not following one of our bylaws, they do have a right to submit a complaint.
But what I want to say, Angela, this fellow seems to be on a headhunt for working people or businessmen or small businesses, and it's on the verge of discrimination with him, because it's not after anybody else but businessmen. So I think we should bring Mr. Turner in here, and I think we should have a talk with Mr. Turner also.
We have found Mr. Turner.
I think about what he's doing, because...
But I, he's within his right.
It's not as if he's going down the street or it's his neighbor that he's complaining about. He's going, he lives on that end of town, he's going to this end of town, that end of town, this end of town.
So you're saying he doesn't have a right to go from place to place?
Well, yes, he does, but I'm saying he don't have a right to be turning all these people in, because there's gonna be a big problem here.
Well, if he feels that there's a violation, just as anybody, I don't want to put it to one person, and I understand, I understand your sentiment, Selectman Gorman.
But when he comes in here and tries to ruin this man's integrity, and it's wrong on what he's doing, and I think we should be...
Do you feel that it was the integrity, or that he was actually making a complaint?
Yeah, I don't think he was making a complaint.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, as I said, I don't totally agree with Billy, he was making a complaint, however, every time he came in, because I've been here for all of them, I know you started afterwards.
I started after.
He would start out by saying nothing's been done, not knowing that behind the scenes, things have been done, and I tried to explain to him over and over again that if I go to your house and you have a vehicle there, and I tell you you can't have the vehicle there, you could theoretically thumb your nose at me, keep the vehicle there, and I may be doing something behind the scenes to find you or to send you a letter that he doesn't know about, and in his opinion, nothing's getting done, but things were getting done.
Um, I...
But if Mr. Turner was...
May I? I think, and I think now that Dan has documented it, and he's sending that letter to them, we have done our part as a town, and then, like Dan said, if he has to, if he decides to appeal them, there's a, I'm not sure, but you're saying there's a fee associated with that, and he chooses... Okay, if he chooses to appeal that, then if he wants to spend that kind of money, so be it. But we have done our part.
Yeah.
You know, unfortunately, or fortunately, we're in a democracy, if people have a complaint, they have a right to go through the process that's set forth. At any point we want to change the bylaw or change that process, we have a process for that too, going through town meetings, so perhaps that's something that we need to look at. I will check with council with regards to some of the things that you had brought up.
Yeah, can I add?
I want to ask you something, Dan. Has he appealed one of those?
No.
Has he received a letter to do it, though?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
There's some in here that have.
Okay.
He has not, he went up to planning and he wanted to appeal them, all of them that I had sent them out that there was no violation.
Mm-hmm.
But when he found out how much it was gonna cost, because he thought he could bunch them all together and pay the $100, no, they have to be done individual, because of the...
Well, you know, I think maybe because of the way the letter was sent before, remember on the letter, it was all bunched together, maybe that could have been why he thought he could do it.
No, he wanted, he wanted to appeal them.
Okay.
But he couldn't. And can I ask something to Mr. Selectman Gorman's, what he had just said? That's why we have this form right here.
Mm-hmm.
What, and I'm not saying as a private citizen, I'm saying as a zoning enforcement officer, if I don't have a written signed complaint.
Right.
I'm not going out on it, and the reason why is because that jeopardizes and puts the town in a lot of liability, because now I, somebody takes me to court, and he said, "He picked me out, singled me out, here's a list and pictures of all the other violations." I'm not gonna win in court. I've got, I think it's seven tickets going out today, between today and tomorrow. And if all of them contest these tickets, if we get $100 from each one of these seven tickets, that's $700, I'm not sure what Attorney Donahue pays, we pay Attorney Donahue to take, to go to court, because he has to come to court with it. And it's not a lucrative business, it's a losing, because I spend half the day in court.
But it is what our process is right now, I mean, you know.
I understand that.
The other piece of it with regards to the letter, I remember you stating that the written process had to be done, but if I recall correctly, that was well into a couple of visits from Mr. Turner? And so I think people, I think our public knows now that the process has to start with that letter.
Oh, yeah.
I think before there was some ambiguity on whether or not you needed to put it in writing, and people were thinking that they could just say it to you. So I hope the public knows that there is a process, you do need to put it in writing, and then, once it's put in writing, you will respond within four...
Yes.
Whoops, 14 days?
Yeah.
14 days.
Yep.
So I think we're in a better place, and I appreciate you getting on that, I really do.
Except for those three in the tickets, two or three in the tickets, that will be closed out tomorrow.
All right, great, fantastic. Okay, yes?
I just happened to find out about this meeting 20 minutes ago. Is there any place I should read the remarks? Should I read something and come downtown and find out? I'd like to come to the meetings, is what I'm trying to say.
The meeting...
Are we in regular meetings?
The meetings, the meetings are posted in the library, Nick Row, and it's posted here, and it's posted on the clerk's office.
Thank you very much.
Oh, not a problem.
On the website, too.
On the website, too?
You could always call me. You know where my office is.
I do.
Not a problem, my pleasure.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. No, thank you, appreciate it, wanted to give you an opportunity to come in.
Yep.
Enjoy your vacation, if I recall correctly.
I love vacation.
Oh, oh. Take care of that, Terry. You know, take care of that.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Now that it was published, and the whole world knows, Angela?
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, he had said it earlier, at an earlier meeting. Okay. Next, um...
Jenny and Andrew?
Jenny and Andrew. Could you not publish that, Mr. Mackey?
It's just...
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi.
Okay. You are here today to talk about something that happened with regards to the Recreation Department, and you wanted to talk to them to get it situated, so do you want it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was just kind of a conversation.
So Ryan, could you come on up, please? Oh, Ryan, Colin, could you come on? I'm sorry. Ryan, you'll always be, Colin, you'll always be Ryan to me, I don't know why.
He's always a piece of Chris to me.
Yeah, that's true. Well, he's the famous jury, so...
Okay. Well, why don't we start off with what the process is? This has been going on a little bit, what's the process when people are coming in to sign up? Is that, when people are coming in to sign up, what happens? Say like somebody was to come to sign up for Zumba 101, not that we have it, but...
We do.
Okay.
Essentially, we have many different ways to sign up, you can sign up online, you can mail it in, but if you walk through the office door, essentially you're greeted by Recreation Department staff, and essentially, you know, "How can we help you today?" And then, if they're like, "I'd like to register for Zumba 101," you say, "Okay." Well, you're gonna need the form right there, feel free to fill it out in full, and then we also ask, "When was the last time they signed up for a program?" Since we instituted the new system, we need to get everyone in that new system, so if they say, "Oh, I signed up for spring lacrosse," great, that means they're already in the system as of, you know, October. At that point, they fill out the form, if they're required to do a medical form, we do a medical form. Once they're completed the form, we take it, put it into our registration folder, and then it's processed by their department.
All right. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So what was the...
Well, I guess, I don't really, I guess more of our questions would be, if we're starting with our questions, it would be in terms of, I guess, applying for camps in the future, just trying to figure stuff out going forth, what's the process going to be, just so we're all on the same page, because I know things happen this year, obviously, that's why we're here. So trying to just figure out, how do we go about submitting to use and run the camp at the high school and submit weeks? Is there a form that we now have to use before it was done in person? So is there a change in this? And then, well, I guess that's my first question.
Okay.
If you want to.
Yep, the Selectmen have asked me to put together a packet, which is essentially put in a proposal to do a summer clinic with the Recreation Department. Those will be requested for summer in January, in which I will be contacting RJ Marhefka, the athletic director, to get the coaches' contact information. I will send it via email.
So you'll send it to the high school coaches?
Yep.
So we can submit?
Yep, all the head coaches from all the different teams, from cheerleading straight through.
And, okay, sorry.
And we will...
Is it head coaches from any, so, and the assistant coaches, because he's obviously the assistant at the high school, so is it just the head coaches, but varsity JV freshmen will all get that information?
Yeah, you would assume that if a head coach is gonna be doing a soccer program, that they would be including their assistant coaches. You know, I can send it to every single coach, but then it would be up to whichever the best proposal is by all the different soccer or football or, you know, whoever.
Do you do it sports specific?
Sports specific, yeah.
So the basketball coach couldn't run?
So the basketball coaches will get one?
Everyone, yep, will get one. In the past, we had put it in the reminder, as well as on our website, that the Recreation Department was requesting proposals for any summer programs. I mean, we do everything from, we have one that's Backyard All-Stars, where a coach just does everything from wiffle ball to, you know, lacrosse, and then very sports specific ones as well, like yours, so...
Okay.
And we'll, with that, we'll do a date of when it needs to be completed, so if, for example, we send them out January 1st, we're gonna want them by February 15th.
Right.
Anybody who doesn't get it in by February 15th, you know, just can't be considered, you know, because, you know, we do need to get it in our brochure and out, and then obviously orchestrate the summer on the best way, you know, possible, so that we can have the most success.
And then how will it be handled if like, because I know like this year is football and us have the same week, so it was an issue saying waiting for football to verify?
Yep.
If that was, was that just because it was this year, the way things were, like, happened? Or like, would we both, like, how will you decide if we submit these two weeks in July, and that's the same week Coach Raymond submits, how will you determine?
What we'll have to do is probably bring in coaches and just say, "How can we best work this out?" With wing tee, it's Friday and Saturday.
Right.
So it's easy, you know, that's, you know, you guys can be on the turf.
You said wing tee?
Wing tee, it's a, it's a certain type of offense.
It's a formation, yeah.
Hey, I'm sorry, you know, I have a son that plays it, but...
So his is a, is a simple issue, because, you know, there is the backfields available for that Friday.
Yep.
But if there's a case where it's, you know, lacrosse and soccer, want to be on the turf at the same exact time, we'd have to just kind of figure out how to best run that. My feeling is that if everyone has a separate week, all camps will be more successful. So if it goes, you know, football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, soccer...
So you would just meet with us and we would set it?
Yep, you know, in the best case scenario, no one wants the same week, but usually we'll handle that as those things come.
My next question, so I'm going down my list. Um, okay, because in the past, it was like, we set the price, we set the discount, we set even the non-resident resident fee, like, last year, it was different. So how is that determined? Like, who sets that and how is it?
Well, it's based on the policies and procedures set by the Recreation Commission, but again, you can set the price however you'd like it to be, but it will be essentially that standard, 80/20 split, 80% to the coaches and 20% to the...
Yeah, no, not that, like, like last year, say, it was $175 for EL residents and $275 for non-residents, and that's how it went out in the flyer and everything, and then this year, it's, it's, I don't, $15 more. So I'm not asking about really the price, just how is it determined, or who gets to determine?
I'm sorry, it's $15 more for...
For a non-resident?
For a non-resident.
So this year our camp...
Last year it was $100 more.
Across the board.
Okay, yeah.
And recreation programs, it's $15 more.
Okay.
And that's the commission's policy, essentially. So if you'd like to do...
So it's just new this year?
Yeah, so if you'd like to do something different, obviously you could come in and see the commission and talk about that policy.
You know, I just didn't know, because there was a new one that we didn't know about.
Well, the, I, when did we ever change? Because I always thought it was always more for a non-resident to attend our camps, yeah.
It always is, yes, it's always...
Well, last year, the price was $100 more for a non-resident. This year, we were told it's $15, no matter what, so for the $30 clinic, it's $45 for it. Like, we didn't, we didn't have any say in what it was, it was just, that's how it was determined, it's $15 more.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know, I would think that if the Rec Commission were to decide year to year what that's gonna be, I, we'd just kind of go with that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, is it decided year to year?
Yes, it does come up.
Okay.
I wouldn't say it would be every single year, I mean, honestly, I only know the last four years of history.
And so I would, I'm gonna assume here, forgive me, that the Rec, Rec Department, Commission would let you know, and then you would put it in your brochure and let them know?
Yep.
Okay.
And what you email us in January.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
And then if you want something different, you obviously can go see the commission and ask for approval.
Okay, for like the sibling discount, stuff like that?
Stuff like that.
Because you don't do sibling discounts?
No, no.
But, all right, so all that stuff, we go to the commission for, to ask for approval?
For approval, yep.
If we need to.
Okay.
All right, I guess my last thing, just to clarify, and I know we talked about this with the commission, but like, can you clarify the club rule, the club affiliation rule? Because originally, we understood it as if we were affiliated with a club, it was we were coaches affiliated with a club. Then at the commission meeting, it was decided, it was the name of the camp can't be affiliated with a club.
It's the program, so if you're marketing the program as Billy Bob's Football School, and that is an actual league, then the Recreation Department does not affiliate with any outside organization for a sport that it currently has.
All right.
So if you're just a coach coming in and you're not, you do not want your program affiliated with maybe a club that you coach for outside of wherever, you can come in and do that anytime, but if you're coming in and you want it to be affiliated with your club, then the Recreation Commission does not affiliate that way.
And that's new this year as well?
That is actually from the past. I did go back and do research with the previous directors, and that's when I came to talk to the commission and said, "Hey, this is from way back." I will say, when I did come in as Recreation Director, there wasn't a lot of information at my desk, you know, policies, procedures. I had to then spend the last two, three years researching things along those lines. I just want to make sure that I follow the commission's past as well as present.
Yeah, because that was obviously, I mean, that was where we all started with this, obviously, because we had done the camp last year under Western United Pioneers, it's how it was advertised in the Rec flyer.
Actually, first it was Western Mass Premier Clinics.
Well, that was, we did that through the high school, yeah. And so then, this year, when we were told in March through your email that we couldn't do it because it was affiliated with the club, that's when it was, that's, that's kind of where this all started.
Okay.
So that's why, that, we didn't know that was a policy, so I guess just being informed of that, then we could have changed our name and just had known, had...
Okay.
We started off as just like a regular Western Mass Premier Clinics, and what Carolyn asked us to do was to change our name for insurance purposes, so we would carry the insurance, and people would come through us, and then the Rec wouldn't have to pick up that or whatever, and I don't, I just said, "Okay, whatever, and we'll do some extra stuff for you for free."
Okay.
Everything was fine. She worked one a day, I obviously worked from home all day, so it's easier for me to come in and do all that, but that's how it was set up through Carolyn, and it was the 80/20 split, you know, and everything was, you know, actually, the stuff that came through Western United, because it was Western United at the time when there was a merger.
Yes, I'm very...
So I'm Western United, so back when that, before the merger, we would handle the registrations for our players, and East Long Meadow would handle the registration for theirs, and they hit the 80/20. In return...
So, so wait a minute, so the Western United players weren't paying?
They weren't paying East Long Meadow, they were paying Western United, and that was just the, what was worked out. What we did in its place was we did high school clinics for the Rec, and we did them for free.
Oh, okay.
So they got, whatever they charged the high school kids, all went to the Rec Department.
Okay, so for this camp that you're doing right now, I guess I want to make sure that the 80/20 split is happening, and I understand that there's been some trouble with registrations, and that's what kind of initiated this meeting.
This meeting, yeah, just kind of to ask all the questions and figure it all out.
Yeah, just get it all out and make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Our registration, he did change the name, so now it's under the East Long Meadow Summer Soccer title.
Okay, were you aware that the name was changed?
Yeah, we've been emailing, we've been emailing each other.
Okay, good, that's great communication, that's what we want to see. We don't like to really get involved in things like this, but certainly if we have to, we do to make sure that things are going smooth for our children, but the registration now, I know it's kind of late in the game, I understand is that some of the people have been instructed to...
Bring their registration forms and payment forms.
So how are you gonna handle that with Colin? Cause now that he's here.
Right, well, it actually was in the, up to present time.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
You asked for me to contact those people. So I can contact, I, I can't guarantee that they're all gonna register online.
Like, you know what I mean? Line in the office, whatever they'd like.
Yeah, cause I, I think it's, the reason that I'm coming, honing in on that is because I think it's important that he knows exactly who's there. And I think there might be a disconnect if it doesn't happen that way. Is it possible that you can get it before the camp starts and bring it to them? I know it's an extra step, but this is just, we're working this out for this year.
Today, that's, it's, it's in a week.
I know, and a holiday in between.
I, like I said, I have started emailing.
Can you bring it to him?
Whatever we have will be turned right into him. It won't be.
I guess what, hmm, perhaps you can have somebody go down, once you have your list before you, you know, you get your little, little camp. Get your camp started with your little ones. Have somebody bring it down to them, or perhaps Colin, you can meet them down there. Maybe that might be what's best is for him to meet you down there and that way he can assist you with your registration process, perhaps?
However you want. I know we go in in Friday and pick up the registration list and the.
Thursday.
Thursday, sorry, the waivers.
Yep.
Um, yeah, not the fourth of July. And, yeah, that's fine. So any new people we have, we'll have them with the registration form and their payment. And we'll write in their name and then he'll have.
And, and part of the concern was with a couple of people that have gone into the rec department and asked specifically about our camps and have been told that they don't exist and that this other camp does exist. And this is where they should be going. And we have emails about that, but we don't want to.
That was led to why we had the selectmen meeting last time.
At the rec department because.
I know you asked me about it, but I didn't feel comfortable emailing you.
Maybe if someone could bring me up to speed, when was I gonna be informed that there were complaints about the recreation department and registrations?
Our last meeting, we brought it to the selectmen because we received an email and it had been an ongoing issue with camp. So we brought it to them and then we were having a meeting today. So that's when we were gonna bring it forth to you.
Yeah.
I wanted to give you an opportunity also to, to explain what the process has been. You're saying that you're not aware of that and that's, that's a whole separate private conversation if that is indeed, you can have a conversation with your staff. It wasn't Colin who did it.
No, that's why it didn't, it wasn't.
It wasn't Colin, it was a staff member?
Member.
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 That's all we heard.
Okay, um, and that's, that's a, that's, that's a separate conversation.
Okay.
Private, you know, because it's one person, it's not you. It's a department thing. And so one of the reasons that you were brought here was so that you could talk for your department, what the process is, what the process has been, and how we're moving forward, just to get this all taken care of.
Okay.
Okay?
So when was, I mean, just from my standpoint here?
Sure.
Uh, when was the complaint brought in? From, from my standpoint, um, I'm the type of person that if there is a complaint, you know, I feel that I should hear about it right away. Um, that way I can, you know, if disciplinary action is, is required, then, then go there. Or if it's just a simple staff training, um, or if it's a, a complete, you know, miscommunication, you know, or if it's not true. I mean, you know, I have to, as, as a director, uh, with my employees, I need to, you know, almost like CSI the situation.
There, there are, there are two issues that were, that were, um, brought about. The main one was the issue of what's happening with the camp, with the date coming so quickly and the registration, making sure that the registrations are being, um, because I've been approached by someone else also to make sure that the registrations were going through the rec department. And that the split, whatever it is, is gonna happen and making sure that they were notified of the roster, who's going to be there. And you, I'm sure you understand, that's for safety issues, you know, and, and, and everything. So that was somebody who approached me about that. Then also, um, what came up in the midst of all of that was that there was an issue with some, more than one folks coming to sign up. And that's why we went ahead and had this meeting to, one, take care of the registration issue. And then let you hear the complaint firsthand. And then we would have a, um, private conversation with regards to the, the specifics of the complaint.
Okay, I feel like that's a very, you know, drawn out process. And with, with me, I, if we could speed that up, um, that way if you do receive a complaint, that you can get it to me very quickly. That way I can get it done.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, normally, in the past, we would've gone to you, but I think the way things happened this year and with the way registration was happening and with what this complaint was, we didn't feel comfortable, honestly. It was kind of.
The timeline and everything too.
Yeah.
I don't wanna say a mistrust, but a little bit. You know what I mean? So it's kind of like, we went here because they've been, you guys have been kind of our mediator, I guess, for this year to move forth in the future.
The thing is, you are moving forward.
Yep.
Right.
Probably will be non-essential, um, in, in the future. That is my hope.
Yeah.
Um, and that it should be taken care of.
Well, the timeline also that we're speaking of is, and it's, it's, we're not accusing anyone of anything.
Okay.
What made us feel very uncomfortable going to Colin as well is there's been, you know, in his original meeting, we were kind of thrown through the mud. And we wanted to make sure that air got cleared and our character was cleared because a lot of it was incorrect.
Okay.
Um, on top of that, none of this started at the rec department. And it, it could be coincidence. But the gentleman that actually turned a couple of people away was the same gentleman that came in when all of this started. So kid came in, started working at the rec department, now all of a sudden, there's no such thing as a Western United camp. And there's no identifying us with the high school. And I'm not attacking anyone, but that.
It's just, it could be a correlation, yeah, there's a correlation.
So that's.
And it's probably a coincidence. Um, I, I do know the gentleman.
And, and I don't think he's a bad guy at all. I'm not questioning his character.
It is an absolute coincidence. Um, I, I can assure you that, that the employee.
I, I do understand business is business.
Yeah, I can, I can assure you that from, from my office's standpoint, it has been to stick to the Recreation Commission's policies, procedures. Um, which, which yes, has taken me a couple of years to research, put together, find out. Because they don't, uh, they're not as organized as I would have them. Um, but I can assure you from my office's standpoint, um, that the person that, that you are questioning um, has been no part of.
Do you understand where we're coming from?
I, I can see.
Gentleman that is your best friend, right? That's running the soccer camp?
No.
Oh, I thought that's what was said in the.
Uh, I'm gonna caution you there on that one, okay?
I will.
Alright, um.
Yeah.
She's getting ready.
Yeah. Would you step up, please? And have a seat.
I just have a question. I, I'm just in listening.
And welcome, one, two, and three.
Part, uh, for Colin.
Mm-hmm.
Um, having been at the meeting since we first went to the rec board, I attended that rec board meeting.
Okay.
And I'm just hearing that he involves his rec board in decisions and, and makes them aware of everything going on. But yet at that meeting, the recreation board was taken aback by the decision that they weren't even allowing East Long Meadow coaches to coach. So I'm just kind of wondering where he stands with his rec board, if at that. I don't believe you two gentlemen were there.
Oh, I absolutely.
Anyone on the board was aware of his decision that night about not having the rec coaches or the high school coaches, Jenny and Andy have a camp.
The, uh.
And I'm just curi-, I, I'm curious what kind of.
I'm gonna go, yes, absolutely, Mr. King. Okay.
Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy, nice to meet you.
Um, one of the things circling around this, we do want high school coaches.
Okay.
Coaching at clinics.
Okay.
No questions about it.
Alright.
As East Long Meadow High School Youth Camp or whatever it's called, maybe we do that for football. I can speak for football because I did this one with Coach Raymond in the past. Specifically for the benefit of East Long.
East Long Meadow, mm-hmm.
Not a Western camp or painter camp or whatever.
Okay, right.
Vince Lombardi's camp.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, let's go with Vince Lombardi, that's, yeah.
Right. So specifically, we wanted that because we don't want advertising for an outside camp coming.
To us, right.
Through us.
Right.
So I just wanted to be clear.
Okay, um, but lem-, can I just take it one step further?
Yeah.
If she happens, let's, let's, Co-, Coach Lombardi comes and coaches, he, he say he's a high school coach. And he comes to coach here. And it says East Long Meadow Coaching Clinic. Coach Lombardi can advertise that East Long Meadow Clinic to whomever he wishes to bring them in. So I think.
That's why there's a delineation between, between resident and non-resident.
Right, and I think that's what we got out of that meeting. It was just more, we didn't know the change in policy. So when we got the email in March, that was, sorry, did I cut you off?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure he didn't wanna say anything.
Okay, and I think that was when, because last year, that's how it was done, Western United Pioneers. And so when it was changed, we just got an email saying we couldn't do it. We weren't informed.
Okay.
You know, so that was that.
I, I did have just one point about that meeting.
Okay.
Uh, it wasn't that we were taken aback. I think the whole issue had just sprouted up, what, that week or?
Yeah, we were unaware.
We, we didn't even know about it. It wasn't on the agenda. Uh, Colin did make a special.
You didn't know about the coaches, the high school coaches not coaching?
Oh, you know. Yeah, it, uh, it.
Okay.
They, it wasn't even on the agenda for that night. Colin had them come in and speak, uh, to us that night. And it was a case, we knew nothing about the situation. It wasn't a case of being taken aback.
Okay.
It was, I'd love to, I, I coached Cathedral Wrestling for ten years. I'd love to have our high school coaches running clinics. Uh, it was just a case, and we all did agree that whoever it may be is an outside source. And I know with soccer, there are a lot of, uh, these organizations.
Right.
It shouldn't be organization driven. It should be East Long Meadow Town. And we all agreed that, you know, high school coaches should be, you know, involved.
Okay, and so, and so the high school coaches will continue to be involved. But, and if they're affiliated with another place, it can be sent to them and advertised, we, the more the better. But if they're not from East Long Meadow, they just pay that differential, whatever it is at that time. Right now, it's fifteen dollars, but if the board, Recreation Board decided to have it be more, then it would be more. Okay.
And, and the process of registration goes through.
Through the rec department, right. And I think we were, we all understand that.
How it was.
One point, I, yep.
Absolutely. We, we need to know who's out on that field for sheer liability.
Exactly.
Insurance, teaching by profession, we need to know who's on our field.
And I think, I think they're in agreement with that. What had happened was there was a breakdown somehow in the registration. These, a few people were told that their camp didn't exist at all. And so that, that's when they took it on thems-, you know, on themselves to, to do the registrations.
Well, we tried.
Prefer, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, yeah, we, 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 on our flyer that was sent, was said, register. And then if you have questions, you can contact us. Then if we got emails, we would say, and you've sent us the link to send to people. But then it was hard to find for the name and you changed the name now. So it was just a matter, but then when this happened, it was more kind of like.
But I think that's more of a timing thing. I don't think that.
Yeah.
I don't think it was.
We completely agree. Honestly, we don't wanna deal with registration. We don't want the paperwork. We don't want the, we don't wanna deal with it. So that's fine.
And, and I think we all agree that it should go through the rec department. Um, but because of the issues, that's how it ended up coming out of the.
Yeah, and by, yeah, I mean, maybe I have five or six, seven people coming that were told, if you can't figure it, just bring.
Okay, so that's gonna be taken care of, cause Colin will be, otherwise known as Ryan, will be at the, the camp to receive and facilitate that very quickly. It shouldn't take that long, right? I know you have a lot to do, but I, I just think that way, it, it, it just, you're there and.
Be myself or, or an employee. It kinda, kinda depends on the day that I'm having, so.
Yeah, exactly. So does that, that works for you?
Yeah, the only other concern would be people that we are bringing in.
Oh, for free, like our kids or we watch my nieces and nephews. Is that gonna be a problem?
I mean, uh, and, and I'm sure you've gotten this about me, when, when it concerns policies, procedures, I, I, I stick to them. Um, you know, and the way I feel is that they should be paid for. But if the select board feels otherwise, I mean, this has been kind of a, an interesting, as we say, it's been a very interesting year at this point um, to get this, this camp going. In the past, um, past practice is that.
You pay for your kids to go?
Yeah, children have been paid for by parents, uncles, aunts, whoever's coaching, you know, type of situation.
This has happened in the past that they've paid for their own kids.
Yes, yes. So I, again.
Refer to the board that's sitting there.
For all my children's activities to the recreation.
Okay, and, and even when you're coaching?
Oh, you definitely.
No, like when you're participating in the sport, like the clinics, the two-hour clinics.
So your nieces are gonna.
Thirty dollars, it's fine. We just didn't know if you'd come and take attendance and then say, well, those two aren't.
We, we were counter to do that. You know, if you had to know who's there and who's paid, you're running a clinic. You should know who signed up and who's paid.
No, I'm not saying that. Yeah, we're pretty organized in that sense. It's a matter of, like, his daughter and son are going to be at the camp. We didn't register them online. I didn't know if you would come and, but if you're saying that's the policy. Yes, if that's the policy, then we will.
What, well, if they're a counselor, why would they?
Well, she's fourteen, so she's helping with the kindergarteners because we were.
Yeah, she shouldn't pay. If she's.
Right, no, no, we're talking, no, we're not saying that.
True, that just a part.
Participants, yes.
Right, we're not saying that she would pay as a coun-, I'm just saying, if that's the policy, again, just.
Yeah, we just.
We're being clear on the policy.
Okay, alright, um, I just have a quick question. Um, not sure who to go to. Um, when a coach, um, goes ahead and has the, the camp, you need a listing of who's gonna be running the camp as well, I would think? Or who's helping with the instructors, yeah? Yeah.
I would defer that to Colin.
Okay.
Um, yeah, yeah, and that's, uh, like the coaches, the, these, uh, Andy and Jenny are to come in to get quarried. You know, anybody over eighteen has to be quarried, anybody who's an instructor, uh, we should have to be aware.
Okay, so if there's somebody working under them as an assistant or a junior counselor, they need to be quarried too?
If they're over eighteen or older.
Eighteen or older, okay.
Yeah, we clarified that. It's, because we have a couple of high schools.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure, you know, cause, cause you mentioned somebody helping you.
Yeah, no, he had, he had answered that one.
Are they on the roster? I, I don't, no offense, I don't wanna see y'all again. So, okay, alright, are there any other questions that are, that need to be cleared up here so we can?
Um, no, I just didn't know if you.
Cause that's part of the eighty twenty split, no?
What do you mean?
No, there's no advertisement.
Oh, the advert, I think we're talking that up to this being the year.
Being there.
Yeah, this has been a, I understand. This has not been a regular.
Excuse me, I apologize. Um, from my standpoint, I've actually, uh, I've put it up on our Facebook, our Twitter, as well as our website. Um, so we've been using social media to market your camp, your.
Well, that, that's, that's good.
I, I mean, we couldn't put out another brochure, cause we had already spent all of our money.
Yeah, we, we need copies and sent them to each of the schools.
Yeah, we have them out on our, um, anywhere we put brochures in town, we've put them out. Um, as well as obviously in, in our department on the counter.
Yeah, cause we went, when we went there to our cores.
Exactly what, what Jenny said.
Fire, I, I just.
Okay.
What's that? Oh, no, they're on, they're on the counter. It's kinda messy at times. You know, people command, they're just going like this, yeah.
Okay.
Um, if I may, just, just at the end, um, the complaints, uh, the complaints that were, um, about my department, can those be sent over to me so I can?
We'll have a conversation. Your liaison will speak with you.
Okay.
Okay, um, Slough McGorman.
Yeah, I had one question, one, cause I'm not overly well-versed in this, but all the camps, like your camp that's run through the rec department, who were the checks made out to?
East Long Meadow Rec.
Okay, that's, I, I wasn't sure, you know, how that was handled, so they all go through the town.
Or they can pay online.
Yeah, what's the same. And, and the second question, or not question, but comment, was you were talking about like, uh, you know, your kids not necessarily being registered, you know, online through the town. Obviously, that's a liability issue because if one of your kids isn't registered and your kid gets hurt and they're not on the roster that we have, then you end up with a problem as far as, you know, taking care of, uh, preventing any potential injury. So that's, that's a necessity, whether you end up paying or not. I think that's a necessity to have everyone listed on the, on the roster.
I agree.
Thank you.
Slough McGorman.
Yeah, I think we covered just about everything, the problem that you had. Um, the only question I got is if, if there's only one child that signs up, you still run the camp, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, he asked for a minimum and a maximum number. And we said, if there's one, we'll still run it, just.
Yeah, yeah, every coach has different minimums and maxims. It kinda depends. If it's a two-hour clinic, it's a little easier to have, you know, three, four, five for two hours. You know, but if it's a six-hour clinic with ten kids, it can be a little, little touchy. And then based on the sport as well, uh, depends on your curriculum. If, if you feel that the, the camp would serve the community well enough with a, a certain amount of kids. So some coaches, their minimums are fifteen, their maximums are a million.
Okay.
Um, and some coaches, um, it's two or three because, you know, two hours, three hours, you know, stuff like that.
So Colin, I'm coming to you, uh, Slough McGorman. So Colin, the, the minimum and maximums are set by the coaches?
Coaches, absolutely.
Or is that kinda like a collaborative discussion between you two?
You know, when a coach emails you and said, I'll take one, you know, that's great, great, awesome. Um, but, you know, sometimes it's based on an educational curriculum that just won't be successful if you don't have the right amount of children.
Why I ask you that, Colin? Cause I, I remember at one meeting, uh, you said that if there ain't enough kids, you gotta cancel the, uh, program, you know?
Yeah, it, it depends on the program. I know that, to give you an example, our Core, Core Endurance, um, that's with, uh, the cross-country coach at the high school. Um, he, uh, has asked for fifteen, um, as, as his minimum. Um, that way it can be a successful program. Um, so every coach has it's, as their own. You know, sometimes if they're like, well, I want a minimum of sixty, that's where I think I get involved. And I say, okay, you gotta be, you know, bring it down. You're trying to tell me you can't be successful with twenty kids? You know, and that's where you, you wanna kinda bring in a, a little bit, you know, about, you know, what we're trying to do.
That's where your negotiation skills.
Yeah, that's where.
That's where it comes in. That's where your negotiation skills come in. That's where it comes in.
And, same, if it's through the chair, and Jenny, if you have one person in your class, there could be one heck of a soccer player.
That's right.
One kid, it'd be great.
Well, I, I think it, everybody is okay, just going across the gamut.
One thing, um, Mr. Gorman, um, uh, when do you think we'll have an opportunity to, uh, go over the complaints?
He'll get to you, Colin. That, that's something, he will get to you. I, I really believe in that.
You'd rather have it sooner than later?
Well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, um.
Just the communication to me, cause you're at work.
Yeah, so you'll know it's both, like, it's both of us, and he might be calling you, but it's for the same thing.
If you could, when she sends something, just, she's copying me on it, and you're already sending it back to her.
Oh, like, I'll reply, I'll, just make that easier for her.
It's just, yeah, I don't really see him relay messages, so.
Oh, like a normal man. Okay.
There's another flyer, if you ask for it.
Fantastic. Okay, well, thank you so much for coming in and getting this.
Thank you, thank you.
Our, our children will benefit from getting that.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to meet you.
Thank you.
Yep, see you.
Okay.
See you on Thursday.
Yep, we'll be there.
But not Friday.
Not Friday.
I'll be doing cannonballs in the final four.
There you go. Where are you going in?
Okay.
Colin, I'll give you a call to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
I think I wanna be in on that meeting, so we'll have to post it.
You have a copy of that already?
I believe so, yeah.
I'm coming. Um, yeah, because.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, um, the next thing that we have.
I thought he was here.
Um, next thing we have on our agenda is, uh, the town accountant search. Um, I guess these are just more of the resumes that were, were, um, distributed. Yes, Nick?
Just, uh, two, two comments.
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think, uh, the announcement about recording.
Oh, I did miss that. Okay, let me go back to that. Well, it's a little late, but, um.
I don't know, the only person who records is here.
The border selectmen's, um, according to Mass General Law, uh, uh, thirty A, section twenty E, uh, requires for us to ask anybody who was recording the meeting, is there anybody who is? There is no one. So we, we are clear. Okay, and the other thing, are the resumes?
With respect to, uh, the resumes, um, the Board of Selectmen, uh, does have the ability to, um, enter into an executive session for discussion under purposes of a search committee.
Okay.
Is designating itself as that search committee.
And we are.
And I believe that is the case. So the Board want to have that, suggest going into the executive.
Okay, but the que- okay.
Are we actually, are we actually reviewing?
I, I didn't think we were reviewing them today. You're just providing them.
I'm, I'm providing, well, I've, I've, I've provided them to the Board previously, and provided them again here today for you. Um, the question I think the Board was going to discuss is what to do, um, with the search itself.
Okay, you know what? For discussion, um, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session to discuss, uh, non-union, uh, negotiations.
Some more?
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Select McGor- oh, excuse me, to return to open session to only to, um, say bye-bye. Adjourn, thank you.
Some more?
Select, Selectman, uh, Federici?
Yes.
Slough McGorman?
Yep.
Okay, so, well, let me, let me finish. Uh, Selectman Thorpe, yes. Hold. What?
Two, two points. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
The, the purpose for the executive session, um, would be to have a discussion as a search committee for the town accountant position. I would, I would also recommend that the Board of Selectmen hold the option to return to open session. Uh, not specifically for the purpose to adjourn, but to, to leave open if there are any announcements relative to the search.
No. I'm gonna, um, I will entertain a motion to, for the, uh, town search to act as a town's, excuse me, as a town search for the, um, town accountant, but we still will o- open, excuse me, we still will open up to.
Adjourn.
Adjourn, uh, open up to open session just to adjourn. Do I have a second?[1790.45]